I'm restarting it. It was showing that it was live and then I'm not sure if it disconnected, but it's showing it's basically uploading. So I'm just gonna check and see if it's gonna go live now. Um, so it's showing me it's live. I just started a minute ago, so it might have just needed another.
Refresh. Yeah. Cody, you ready?
Yeah, we're ready.
All right, go in just a minute here. All right, Carol, looks good.
Says we're recording live on Facebook, Justin.
Yep, I got it. Thank you. All right, it's seven o'clock. Like to call tonight's board of selectmen meeting to order here on December 2nd. Per Governor Baker's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30A, section 20. The public will be not be allowed to physically access this board of selectmen meeting. However, public comments and questions may be submitted to the board in advance of the meeting by completing the Google form prior to the meeting by Tuesday, December 1st, 2020 at 4:30 PM. Also, the meeting will be broadcast live via Seacom Cable TV9 and streamed live on Seacom Town Hall Facebook page as well as TV9's Facebook page. Mass General Law, Chapter 38, subsection 20F requires any person recording must notify the chairman at the beginning of the meeting. Like to call the meeting to order. Let call the meeting to order, please. Can someone please read the board and committee openings?
Volunteers are needed for the Board of Assessors, Capital Improvement Committee, Commission on Disability, Conservation Commission, Economic Development Committee, Energy Committee, Historical Commission, Parks and Recreation, Recycling Committee, Zoning Board of Appeals.
Mr. Chairman, could we just do a roll call for attendance purposes?
Sure thing. We'll begin with how we sit in the room typically. Mr. Petronio, roll call, please.
Adam Petronio, present.
David Viera, present.
Chris Zora, present.
David Andrew.
Justin Sullivan, present.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, for for tonight, we're gonna begin with license hearing to item A, consider the request for a change of manager for Not Your Average Joe's located at 1125 Fall River Ave to Sarah Tedeschi.
Mr. Chairman, this is a pretty straightforward request for the change of manager for Not Your Average Joe's located at 1125 Fall River Ave. Ms. Tedeschi has all the information that was required. You'll see her surf safe certificate and all the other certificates are there. There are no issues with other departments.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion?
Motion as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Unless I'm missing it, and I know you just mentioned it, Sean, I don't see the serve safe certificate. Oh, okay, I do. I see it. I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
Any other, any other discussion? All right, roll call, please, as we kneel or which we sit in the room, please.
Adam Petronio, I.
David Viera, I.
Chris Zora, I.
David Andrew, I.
Justin Sullivan, I. Item B, consider the request for a new class two motor vehicle license for Gerard Elmasi, G Squared, Inc., DBA Stephen Service and Car Sales to be located at 1045 Fall River Ave.
This chairman, this is a the transfer of licenses, a new ownership taking place. This is approved by the board. So we have the application and support and documentation for the new motor vehicle class two license. We also have a letter from the property owner, and then I've also had Chris Testa include the site plan in previous motor motor to the class two vehicle license for the board. There was stipulations that were put on for the last owner. So it's the stipulation is no more than five unregistered vehicles to be on the lot at one time.
Okay.
Just a point of clarification, Sean, if you could, I believe we put that no more than five unregistered vehicles, but he was allowed to have unregistered vehicles there that could be worked on.
For repair.
For repair.
Yep.
Is that so noted here or?
I know. I mean, that's, that's up to the board how you want to handle it, but the parking plan's there. So you, you can deliberate as to whether or not you want to stipulate that as part of the license. The big piece that was part of the license was the unregistered vehicle portion. That's why we stipulated the five unrestricted vehicles.
So so my question to you is, if we let it go through the way it is, and not that I'm looking to add more unregistered vehicles there, I just want to be fair to the gentleman. If there are more than five unregistered vehicles there, even though they're not for sale, will he be in violation?
He would. Yeah. So I think we just need to get Carol to to get the individual over from attendees, so he can just speak to it. Okay. Gerard, are you on?
Hi.
So is the plan, I think Mr. Viera's question is the plan to do auto. Is it just to sell cars? Is there going to be repairs as well?
No, we do have repair shop as well. We do, we repair automotive.
Okay. So, so I think the stipulation should probably be similar to what you've approved in the past with Stephen.
Yes.
So I remember the conversation that we had in the past, and I think that's what I'm looking for clarification on. Was it five including repair vehicles or five plus repair vehicles?
No, it was five unregistered vehicles plus their repair vehicles because there was, there was a concern. Not necessarily with the number of repairs that they had, but when they came back before for the class two license, there was a concern about the parking plan and how many unregistered vehicles were going to be on there. So that's why we stipulated the five unrestricted vehicles. They can have more on there for repairs as long as they had mass plate toward island plates.
Okay.
For the, for the parking plan, though, I mean, obviously.
My point, it's five total unregistered vehicles. And then if there's other vehicles that are being repaired on and they're registered in Mass or Rhode Island, that's fine.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted to be clear.
Exactly. That's where I was going.
So he have, he could have only three vehicles for sale, which would leave that are not registered, and then have space on the lot for the license and the parking plan for two additional unregistered vehicles that he wants to work on. And that's it. And then if he has any other registered vehicles, that's fine. He just needs to comply with the parking plan.
Correct.
Okay.
But I think we need to be careful as well, because as everybody knows, that's a postage stamp lot. And there's a lot of traffic in and out of there on a regular basis. From what I understand, that facility serves as Stop and Shops, gas and go, so to speak. When you obviously purchase whatever at Stop and Shop, it gets accredited to your account and you can go there. So my point is there's more than average gas sales there. So if we crowd the lot too much between unregistered being sold and vehicles to be worked on, we could have a jam.
Yeah, I'm not look, I wasn't looking to increase it. I was just looking to get the clarification.
Right.
I was understanding the limit is five, whether for sale or repair, the limit is five unregistered vehicles.
Right.
And then if there's any additional that are registered, that's fine, as long as they fall within the parking plan.
Right. I think we need to say that to just me, that we need to specify that the license holder will adhere to the parking plan, which we all know, but it needs to say that. Because again, you could have five unregistered and try to put 10 vehicles there for maintenance or for for repairs. And again, if it doesn't meet the parking plan, it can't happen. I mean, am I, am I making?
I ask a point, point of clarification, please. On the the motive, the copy of the motor vehicle dealer license.
Yep.
Here 20-10. It does, I mean, it flat out just says.
Yep.
It describes your office in two bays, flat out describes no more than five unregistered vehicles in the lot at one time. Doesn't say, it doesn't differentiate between what's being repaired and what's being sold. So in my opinion, this is inclusive.
Agreed. I guess I just want to make sure that the the buyer is aware of that. That way we're not sitting here looking at, oh, but I have five unregistered vehicles for sale, right? And that's.
But do you, did we end up fixing the the audio for for Gerard?
Yes, he's on.
Sir, are you, are you fully aware you will only be able to have no more than five unregistered vehicles on the lot at any time?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Excellent. I see, I see no reason to not motion, motion to pass this as written.
Okay.
You have a discussion.
But he has to understand that he needs to follow the parking plan as well, and it's not just the five unregistered vehicles.
Yeah, I think that goes with any, that, I know I'm gonna that should go without saying, but.
Well, I think we need to say it, though.
Okay.
So he understands it.
Yes, sir. I do.
Okay.
All right. So we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Got a second? Okay. Any other discussion? All right, roll call vote, please, Mr. Petronio.
Petronio, I.
David Viera, I.
Chris Zora, I.
David Andrew, I.
Justin Sullivan, I. Thank you. Good luck.
Justin, before you continue, Cody, are you there?
Actually, Kevin, that's on there. I know Cody, he's just using Cody's login.
Kevin, I got a text about no sound working on channel 15. I went to my TV to confirm there is no sound coming to the TVs.
Yeah, I'm trying to work on it right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right, 2021 license renewal hearings. These, you guys all received the applications and business stamps and everything for with regards to the license renewals. We're gonna take this kind of in order by item here. We'll offer up some discussion. But when a motion is made, please make the motion as for example here. Motion to approve all alcohol licenses as presented. Or when we get to motor vehicles, you do motion to approve class one, class two, and class three motor vehicles as presented, obviously, unless we have exceptions. Okay? But that way we're not having, last year, I think there was a little bit of little bit of confusion as to whether or not we wanted to do, or we had to do some classes and everything. But Claire, we got clarification that you just do it as I just explained, and that'll take care of approval for all the licenses. So item A, alcohol. So on the first page of your packet, you see represented with the current number of licenses that we have in town and what's available. When you look at all the alcohol license renewals, I'll kind of go down by each individual one just to see if you guys have any questions. We'll, we'll go fairly quickly. But if I go too fast, please stop me so we can go back and address anything. So first one, all alcohol.
Mr. Chairman, just before you proceed, just so the board is aware, all these individuals that are listed, all the businesses that are listed before you are in full compliance. There are no issues with any outstanding items.
Thank you. Okay, all alcohol club 2020 license renewals. All alcohol in holders licenses. All alcohol licenses. I'm go, I'm assuming silence is that there's no questions and no issues. So wine and malt. Veterans Club licenses. All alcoholic package stores. Wine and malt package store. And that covers all the alcohol licenses. Do I have a motion to approve the alcohol licenses?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Adam Petronio, I.
David Viera, I.
Chris Zora, I.
David Andrew, I.
Justin Sullivan, I. Okay, item or class. Item B, class one, two, three motor vehicles. Class one motor vehicles. There any questions? Class two.
I've got a question on number 39. So Sean, I know you said that there were no issues with any of these. We had a bunch of issues with the car palace. I believe it was the car palace over the last year, a couple of years and this, the beginning of this year. As the building inspector gone out, have those issues all been rectified? Do we still have the the Conex box still up against the building? Are we still having any parking issues?
Now, the the building, the building department, the fire department has, has gone out to all these properties to make sure that they're all in compliance with all standards and codes. So everybody's in compliance.
Okay.
Are there any other questions with regards to the class two?
That was the one that boarded East Providence, right?
Yeah.
Right. I remember that.
Class three. Okay, do I have a motion to approve class one, two, and three motor vehicles?
So move. Second.
Okay, one of us, it doesn't matter.
Mr. Petronio, roll call, please.
Adam Petronio, I.
David Viera, I.
Chris Zora, I.
David Andrew, I.
Justin Sullivan, I. Item C, entertainment.
So move.
Go through, hang on. Yeah, all right. Do I have a motion? Any questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the entertainment licenses?
It's already on, I think I heard Chris.
Okay.
This is our.
Do I have a second?
Second, I'll second.
All right, roll call. Any other discussion? Roll call, Mr. Petronio.
Adam Petronio, I.
David Viera, I.
Chris Zora, I.
David Andrew, I.
Justin Sullivan, I. Item D, amusement facilities. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Petronio, roll call.
Adam Petronio, I.
David Viera, I.
Chris Zora, I.
David Andrew, I.
Justin Sullivan, I. Item E, go kart. I'm sorry, I didn't, yep, got it.
Oh, amusement machines. You want to go back and do amusement?
Yeah, they're included in the amusement facilities.
All right. So move.
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Adam Petronio, I.
David Viera, I.
Chris Zora, I.
David Andrew, I.
Justin Sullivan, I. Item F, miniature golf. So move. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, roll call.
Adam Petronio, I.
David Viera, I.
Chris Zora, I.
David Andrew, I.
Justin Sullivan, I. Item G, theater. Have a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Adam Petronio, I.
David Viera, I.
Chris Zora, I.
David Andrew, I.
Justin Sullivan, I. Item H, poem and card reading. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Well, any discussion? Roll call.
Adam Petronio, I.
David Viera, I.
Chris Zora, I.
David Andrew, I.
Justin Sullivan, I. Item A, item I, amusement machines. Sorry, I'm a little out of order here on this sheet. So do I have, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
Roll call.
Adam Petronio, I.
David Viera, I.
Chris Zora, I.
David Andrew, I.
Justin Sullivan, I. Item J, antiques in second hand. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Adam Petronio, I.
David Viera, I.
Chris Zora, I.
David Andrew, I.
Justin Sullivan, I.
I was surprised to see how many Grand Prix ones licenses that they had. It must be a painful paper keeping exercise. Thank you, Grand P, free.
Hey, general business, item A, consider the conditional offer of employment for David Mahoney to the position of patrolman third class. Mr. King.
Thank you. Chief Isabelle, do you want me to take this or do you want to take it?
Yeah, no, I'll take it. First of all, gentlemen, good evening. Hope everybody's doing well.
Great. This is your first official day, correct?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Yeah, so David Mahoney is a officer who previously worked in Seacom as a both a patrolman and a detective. He started working in Seacom in 2011. Previous to that, he was a patrolman in in Nantucket. He was a field training officer for us, a firearms instructor. He's a member of the Semlek SWAT team as an operator and a sniper. And in 2016, he was assigned to the detective division. October of 2019, he moved to Cape Cod and transferred to Dennis PD. Life circumstances have changed and he's moving back to the area and would very much like to be part of the Seacom PD once again. It would be a valuable asset to us to have him back in the fold. He would be able to start pretty much immediately. He's obviously familiar with the town and the operations. He's never had any issues as an officer with Seacom. There are no pending issues in the Dennis PD. He's leaving strictly to return back to the area and he left the department on good terms when he did leave. And it would be a strong candidate for us to have back on board considering his varied skills.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion?
When would it start?
Just could, so my, my recommendation would be that we provide a conditional offer of employment to David Mahoney. As, as the chief had mentioned, you know, Detective Mahoney had left on good terms. Everybody was sad to see him leave, and quite frankly, I I think he was a little sad to leave as well. I know there was, the decision was really to to move the family, or the family wanted to get closer to his wife's family down towards the Cape. Clearly, they're looking to get back. So that's, it's a, I think it's a win-win for us. He was, he was a great officer. So as, as the chief had mentioned, it really is a plug and play, which is really needed at this time with the staffing levels that we have.
When would he start?
I don't know if he gave a start date. We, this is a conditional, so we would still have to go through the background. So.
Okay.
I mean, the background is probably going to be quicker than normal backgrounds because he was, he was just employed with us. So.
Right.
And he's still, he's currently an officer anyway. So, yeah, that should be quick.
Be quick. Good. Are there any other questions?
I, I'd like to make a statement.
Okay.
We get a motion or a second.
Okay, so there, if there are any other questions, then can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Is there any other discussion?
Okay, I, I don't know Mr. Mahoney from a hole in the wall, and not that it would matter, but I hope he understands, chief. Through you, I would hope you would relay this. This is not a revolving door. Okay, I mean, he was here. He decided to leave for whatever reason. That's his business. He wants to get, come back. That's fine. It's a win-win situation for us, as previously mentioned, but I hope he plans on staying this time.
Yeah, I've, I've spoken to Mr. Mahoney and did relay those sentiments. I also am going to meet with him again tomorrow after the approval of the conditional offer to to reemphasize some of the points that you've made. It's very important that we have consistent staff, especially when you have him assigned to certain positions within the department that are critical to our operations. So he's fully aware of that, and I will continue to reemphasize that point.
I appreciate that, chief. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call, please?
Adam Petronio, I.
David Viera, I.
Chris Zora, I.
David Andrew, I.
Justin Sullivan, I. Thanks, chief.
Thank you, chief.
Item B, consider the appointment of Robert Emlyn to the, to the Conservation Commission.
Mr. Chairman, as the board, as I mentioned at the last meeting, we had just appointed Mr. Emlyn to the cultural council and that we were trying to get him on to the Conservation Commission. So he is, he attended a meeting and was, as I mentioned before, excited, and we would be bringing this before you. So it's my recommendation that we appoint Robert Emlyn to the Conservation Commission. And he would be filling in an unexpired term, which was left vacant by another member who resigned. So the term would be, would end June 30th, 2022.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Adam Petronio, I.
David Viera, I.
Chris Zora, I.
David Andrew, I.
Justin Sullivan, I. Thank you, Mr. Emlyn, for volunteering your time now to two committees that we have here in town. So really appreciate you spending your retirement helping us out. So thank you.
May I hop in here and say something?
Yes.
I didn't, I didn't realize you were on. I'm sorry.
I'm still.
And I just got a little tangled up a couple of weeks ago when my name was in nomination for the cultural council. So I didn't show up for this, this board of selectmen meeting. So sorry to have stiffed you on that occasion, but I appreciate the confidence you've expressed about it now. I'm looking forward to serving in these two capacities. That's all.
And we're looking forward to having you.
Yes. Thank, thank you very much.
Okay. All right, item C, discussion of the Comcast contract. It's on tonight's agenda now that we've completed the two public hearings. We have anybody on from?
No, I, I think there was some, just some miscommunication. I think Mr. Tessa just thought it was just an internal conversation with the, the board, so we didn't reach out to the TV9 folks.
Okay. So I guess, yeah, at this point, you know, we don't have their budget then, which was, that was the kind of point here is that we had an opportunity here to look at their budget or what they're, because they had to go back and make revisions and if the school had anything to be submitted, because we wanted to continue the meeting for the 16th with Comcast. So I think at this point.
Well, I've, I've got their, I think I've got their budget. Just if you bear with me, I just got to pull it up because I know I definitely emailed. Well, I I've got their, I think I've got their budget. Um, just if you bear with me, I just got to pull it up because I I know I definitely emailed you folks as part of the PowerPoint presentation. So I could, I can pull that up.
Well, they they remember they had given us their original ask, right? And then at the, you know, prior to the public hearings and they had some asks in there that they needed to go back and call through a little bit to get closer to the you know, the current number that we were looking at, the, you know, the five percent and the seventeen five, you know, per year, so. Um. Yeah, that I would have I would have expected that that was probably going to be done by now.
Oh, you're talking about that there?
Their piece.
Gotcha. I saw you said.
Yeah. So, I mean. We can, I guess my question to you, Mr. Kadim is, you know, given the fact that our current contract has expired with Comcast. Um, it does continue on, I as I understand, you and I had spoken, right? Does continue on until we get a new one resolved. Um. Can we get them in for?
We can, and I and I apologize for that. Uh, we'll make sure that we get them on the next agenda.
Okay, so you want to do? So hold off on Comcast themselves for the January agenda. We got, we need to have a open discussion with the TV nine board with with regards to what their needs are before we go forward, of course.
And you want them on for the sixteenth?
Yeah, let's have them on for the sixteenth. Yeah, and then at which point if the schools were putting together their ask, I don't know if they've been, I think they were supposed to be working with Cody to try to help round up some costs.
Hmm.
So. Yeah, then we can figure out where we want to go. But then the the plan would be to have Comcast in for the January, just look at what the next meeting is, January, was it January sixth?
Yep.
Now we just get that completed.
So you you're looking to get, make sure that TV nine has their budget and recommendations pared down to the absolute needs.
Yeah, I mean, I I think in in partnership, if they're the primary peg here, you know, and if they're going to be the if the forest selectmen have collectively decided to, you know, not change any of the peg amounts. Um. You know, then just need to get that budget tightened up a little bit so that we know what the ask is and
Okay.
You know, that we're all on the same page.
Right.
That's all.
Okay.
All right. Is there any other member? Have any comments?
Did we make that? I don't recall the board voting to make that decision.
Make what decision?
That we were going to keep the peg amount the same. I think the consent, the consensus was there. But is that where we all as a board are going? If so, then you're right. They needed to bring that proposed budget in line to align with that number.
They, no, there there wasn't a vote, but there wasn't a vote needed for it either. The the plan as we left that meeting was they had to go back and revise their initial budget proposal based on the consensus of what we have for the peg amount and all of that. And then then there were some decisions to be made because the school still had, they remember we got a, we got a basically a a blank sheet from the schools. They had a couple pieces of equipment in there, but we didn't get any. Uh, there was no dollar amount attached to it. So we needed to get, see what they needed, and then we also would have to come back, look at their needs, look at TV nine's needs and then decide, are we going to go with the current status, the current peg dollars that we're doing, or are we going to redirect some peg dollars to the schools uh for what their needs are? So there there were still a lot, there were still open ended questions when we got done with that.
Yep, right, because we hadn't even decided whether we were going to give the money to the school or just have it go through TV nine as it always has been.
Correct.
Okay.
But I I think we also were clear on the concern in raising any amount um to Comcast because it would only be turned over to the subscribers and our concern was not to increase what they were already paying, in my opinion, uh, an abundance of money to over abundance, I should say.
Right.
Um, so I I think that's, that was a strong message that was sent. Maybe I misunderstood, but I think we need to adhere to that.
No, I I think that was, that was, you're right, that was clear from that, you know, from that meeting as well, plus they have to overcome some of the challenges of decreasing membership or or should we say decreasing subscribership and what they're actually spending for that five percent piece, right?
Right.
And and you know what the true needs were going forward because they're they're going to be faced with some issues.
Absolutely, I agree.
By by the end of a ten year contract, they could be could be a real interesting environment for them.
You know, and and again, I know we're repeating ourselves. It would be different if anything that we increased uh our take, let's say, to Comcast came out of their proceeds, but it doesn't. And again, just to refresh everybody's memory, and I don't mean our board members, I'm talking about the viewing audience. Anything we increase to Comcast is going to come out of their pockets, meaning they're just going to increase the bills that much more. So. I mean, I think it's important, but I again, I'm repeating myself.
Right.
May I ask a clarifying question too? We getting back from the library? Library is one of the other peg benefits.
Uh, no, they don't, they don't receive any any peg funding right now.
Okay, and then my second question would be um we're still going to ask the question about the service center location?
Yes.
Okay, I want to make sure that's in there.
But you know, just to kind of build on what Adam just asked. The library doesn't get any of the peg money, so to speak, but Cable Nine does address the needs or requests, I should say, of the library. So it's not like uh, the library is left out there dangling on its own. Uh, they do get taken care of by Cable Nine, so they don't obviously lack in equipment. Maybe the equipment isn't as modern, for lack of a better term, as uh as everybody would like it to be, but it's it's still good equipment and very functional.
I think they do have some new servers there, if I remember reading something earlier. So they do have a lot of computer and media storage.
Right, but there but there are certain limitations, I think, as to how the the pegs can spend their money on equipment. And yeah, some things are straight capital items and then others are, you know, what they're permitted to do, so.
Yeah, and that that would be like into the weeds of the question, but that's why I was asking if we had any feedback.
Yeah. So. Okay, is there anything else with regards to this discussion before we table it until next meeting? Okay. All right, thank you. All right, item D, discussion of tax title properties and potential consideration of tax title auction.
Mr. Chairman, the board was uh given a list of property that was taken over uh through the tax title process. Uh, this was last reviewed uh in two thousand nineteen. The board went through it to identify which properties they did want to keep. Um, I just wanted to go back now that uh we do have some anchor properties that uh could potentially draw in some some folks that might want to bid on some of these other properties that wouldn't necessarily um draw some some crowds for for an auction if it was just on their own. So I just wanted to go before we um gave the okay to Chris the fonts, who's the custodian of tax title to move forward with the uh the auctions, if we just kind of go right down this list again, uh just make sure that we're comfortable with uh the ones that are are listed. Um. On here that that we're okay with the the auctioneer, if somebody wants to bid on the property, um having that property sold. The two uh properties that the board in two thousand nineteen kept off the list was Ri Ice Land and Co., and that's on the second page, if you you're looking at your document. In ROC Realty Corp., uh, which is the thirty-six Maple Ave location that we're looking to uh get redeveloped and we're doing, we're currently doing um the cleanup Brownfield uh grant work on.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, um
Sure.
I I think it's excellent that we're doing this. Um, Sean, question for you. Before we actually go out to auction, is is there a way that we can contact the abutting owners of any of this property to see if there's any interest there or just to let them know that the property may be going out to auction? Um, because I know in looking at properties before, uh, when we were thinking about relocating the American Legion, a lot of these properties are landlocked.
Yep.
So there's no access. So theoretically, the land's only worth something to somebody that abuts the property.
Yeah, what, and and that's a good point. What we could, what we could probably do is just pull uh an abutter's list for uh the properties and and any actual abutting property that's that's really tied to it.
Right.
Um, we can, we can just send a letter saying that there's going to be an auction for the parcel, you know, you know, where it is and see if they're they're interested in it as well.
Right, I I think that would be
That's a good recommendation.
Thank you.
Sean, that big list that we had last year, that already went out to auction?
No, this is the same, it's the same list.
The same, all right, I thought there was a lot more last year.
No. Yeah, we we haven't done, uh, I'm not sure when the last time an auction was uh took place in in Seco, but I've
Been awhile.
I was going to say, I've been here since two thousand fourteen. We haven't
No, and it was a while before then. We used to sit on it. Don't ask me why, but that's it, that's property, obviously, that's off the tax title.
Yep.
So to speak, we're not getting any taxes for it.
Okay.
All right, so. Sean, do you need a a formal vote for approval?
Uh, no, I just just consensus that we're good with the fact that we're just going to hold the the two that have uh been requested to hold, which would be Ri Ice Lands Co. and ROC Realty Corp.
Okay, does anybody have any issue?
Uh, all right, would you say R I S Land Co., Sean?
Ri Ice Land Co. Yeah, that's next to the Burris Ponds area.
Okay, so it would be in our best interest to keep that, you're right.
Correct, yep.
Especially with what's been going on there as as far as walking trails and
Yep.
And that's all, okay, yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Can we take that right off the list? Would it be?
We can, that's why it's, that's why I put it on there. I just wanted to make sure that everybody was okay with it before we
So why don't we just, you need a motion to do that, take it right off the list?
Yeah, if you want, if you want to do that and just say that we're going to maintain it and that's
I I'd like to offer a motion that we take both of those properties uh right off the list, uh at least for the time being.
Seconded.
Who has presented then?
Yes.
So they had to remain off the list, yeah. That'd be a clarifying, clarifying point.
All right, uh, any other discussion? All right, roll call, please.
I'm turning.
AVRI.
Chris or I.
David ended that.
Justin Sullivan, I. Okay. No other issues at the list. I think you're good to go.
Yes, thank you.
For what it's worth, I I think it's a good time of year to put that on the agenda while we're thinking about taxes and 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 that sort. Um. I I think that was a good move. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
All right, item E, consider accepting a hundred dollar anonymous donation for the Human Services Fuel and Utilities account.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Adam Trony Y.
AVRI.
Chris or I.
David ended that.
Justin Sullivan, I thank you very much.
Thank you to all who donated.
Thank you.
Item F, consider accepting the donation of one thousand two hundred twenty-two dollars for the Human Services Gift Account Gift and Donation Account.
So moved.
Seconded.
Roll call.
Adam Trony Y.
AVRI.
Chris or I.
David ended that.
Justin Sullivan, I thanks to all those who donated to that account. Item G, consider accepting various donations totaling three hundred seventy-five dollars to the Human Services Gift and Donation Account in memory of Joe Mello.
So moved.
Seconded.
Roll call, please.
I'm turning.
AVRI.
David.
Chris or I.
David ended that.
Justin Sullivan, I, once again, thank you very much to everybody that donated there. Item H, consider accepting the minutes of October fourteenth, twenty twenty.
Motion to accept as distributed.
Seconded.
Roll call, please.
Adam Trony Y.
AVRI.
Chris or I.
David, David ended that.
Justin Sullivan, I. Community speaks. I didn't receive any questions submitted. If anybody else has any questions. Okay, and do we have anybody caroling on the attendees?
I don't have anyone indicating that they're looking to speak.
Okay, this is a reminder, folks, now that we're on to Zoom and with this new format, if you want the opportunity to actually speak on the meetings and you can log in. Um. You go into an attendee room and we're able to actually call on you. So if you're unable to email a question or email something to uh another board member, uh but you want to log in and and attend it, you know, or just listen in at night and maybe even ask a question. Um, you know, feel free to do so. You can, like I said, we'll we'll call, we'll check on the attendee area um to see if there are any residents that have any questions, so uh unlike the, we didn't have that ability back in the spring with the Zoom, so um something new and hopefully it gives you guys a little bit more access, so. Uh, other business. There are no other, discuss other topics that reasonably anticipated by the chairman forty-eight hours before the meeting. There's nothing that I'm aware of.
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Uh, town administrators, town administrators report.
Uh, nothing at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Forest Selectman Liaison Reports, Bristol County Advisory Board, I do have something. They had their uh annual meeting um on November nineteenth after, right after our last meeting, uh, a couple of key items to note. Uh. The county has been authorized to issue a county tax in the amount of six point eight million dollars and change. Um, the Bristol Aggie High School budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one was approved for ten million eleven thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. And the county budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one was approved for twenty-three million nine hundred ninety-eight thousand six hundred sixty-one dollars. Uh, there were some other items that would include some union contracts. Um, you know, accepting of receipts, et cetera, but those were the, those were the big, uh, those were the big items. Uh, they too battled with technology issues for most of that meeting. They eventually got it straightened out, but um, they did have quorum. There was most towns were, you know, were present and held on through some of the techni, you know, technology issues. They had a couple of towns drop off, but still maintained quorum. So. That's all I got for Bristol Aggie. Um.
I noticed
County Finals Report.
I had a question. I know it's a transfer um, because Bristol Aggie had a plus up of, I think it was like eight uh students going from Seco. So how does that budget interact with the amount of money that each of the town has to pay for students going to Bristol Aggie? Is there, is there some magic formula on that?
It's 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 based on uh population, so student population enrollment.
Right. I mean, it was, they do, they're obviously doing something right. Their enrollment's up, at least from residents here in Seco, so kudos to them. But, yeah, I was just wondering how that worked.
Yeah, and I can, I I forget what our percentage was, but they they send it over to us, so I can, I can get that over to you.
Okay, I'm just curious because that's a mechanic I'm not familiar with.
Yeah, and and they're, they're also in the midst of a a pretty major building project. pretty major building project that still seems to be on target for what they had planned on doing.
Both schools.
It was 100 and your total project budget was $103 million. They received an MSBA grant for 51 million. So
That's actually, that's that's impressive.
So the bond, the bond that's going to go out, that'll be split out. Also, you know, they specified this, the bond that'll go out will be for 52.5 million. And the debt, the payment share will be determined based on number of students for each year, much like the current formula. So the, you know, our, our percentage of what the bond payment each year is going to change as well. It's not going to be a fixed amount by town.
I'm going to go, yeah. Interesting.
Also, keep in mind Tri County is going to do the same thing, Adam. So the, it's going to, the cost is going to go up for both schools based on the renovations.
Yep. Okay. So that's it for Bristol County Advisory Board. Aiken School expansion?
Aiken School, I took a tour today of the building. Lake reported last week, they're moving right along. They were hanging cabinets, doors, everything and getting ready for the flooring to start going down, painting the walls and getting the ceiling and to start and prep for the, for the floors, I say, by Christmas, which is only a couple of weeks away. The floors will start going down, which most people know that that's almost the final step to a lot of the interior renovations. So they're moving quickly over there. Do you want me to do comments now or after?
We'll do it after. But yeah, school definitely looks good. So 540 Arcade.
Nothing new to report. We are meeting tomorrow with the architect. There's a couple of questions. Again, that'll be a Zoom meeting and I'll have more for the next meeting as a follow up to that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Veterans Council?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Forest Selectmen comments, I'll go around the, or as to how we sit, I'll start, we'll go from the other side around this time. We'll start with Mr. Andre. Do you have anything?
You're muted.
You're muted.
Not at this time.
You were looking at us, we were looking at you. We were trying to figure out what was going on.
That was his way of telling us he had no comment.
Mr. Zora.
If he's silent, what? He's what?
Means no.
Oh, boy.
Mr. Zora, do you have any comments?
Just one thing, Sean, can you reach out to DPW for coming up, reach, going into the Coles Plaza over the summer? They had put cones up to divide the lanes when you're coming up with the Coles on your right to come down because
Yeah, those, those got knocked down and it seems like they were taken out. We'll, we'll get them back up, especially with
Okay, because I noticed with the holiday traffic, people were stopping and instead of going and yeah, I heard Rip, Rip took out a few of them.
Yeah.
So if we can just put up temporary cones to help get rid of that traffic and that's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Viera.
I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Great. Mr. Petronio.
I just want to comment that this Zoom meeting is probably the best setup one I've seen so far. And kudos to all the efforts that went into getting us on Facebook Live, TV nine, Zoom, computers, everything. It's a lot of work.
Thank you.
Yes, kudos, especially to Miss Days. I know you were involved firsthand and thanks to the TV nine folks because you guys, I know, worked very hard and responded to, responded to our request after we all met. You know, a few weeks ago, actually a month ago. So to make increased access there is appreciated. I have nothing else new to report myself. I'd like to entertain a motion to enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, Augustine Perely Etal versus Tennessee ConcaTol pursuant to Master of Law 30A subsection 21A3 as having discussion in open session would be detrimental to litigation or bargaining position of the town. Item B, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation Butterworth for Seacom pursuant to having discussion in open session would be detrimental to the bargaining position in town. Item C, to conduct strategy, strategy sessions with respect to negotiations with the United Steelworkers of America Clerical Unit 9517-10 per Master of Law Chapter 30A subsection 21A3 is having the, the discussion in open session would be detrimental to the litigation or bargaining position of the town. Item D, to conduct strategy sessions with respect to negotiations with the United Steelworkers Supervisors Unit Local 9517-01 per Master of Law Chapter 30A subsection 21A 3 is having the discussion in open session would be detrimental to the litigation or bargaining, bargaining position of the town. Item E, to consider the approval of executive session minutes from August 19th, 2020 as distributed. Item F, to consider the approval of the executive session minutes from September 23rd, 2020 as distributed. G, to consider the approval of executive session minutes from October 28th, 2020 as distributed. And item H, to consider the approval of executive session minutes from, from October 14th, 2020 as distributed.
No move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Adam Trony, why?
A V R I.
Chris Zora, I.
David Andrew, I.
Justin Sullivan, I. Good night, folks. Thank you very much for watching tonight.
Thank you.